Really hasn't got a lot of press because that's even more complicated and has even more nuances. So it's sort of been lost in the shuffle and we've just heard a lot about the dark store loophole. But there's actually, there are two bills that were presented last summer. One for the dark store, one for the Walgreens. So I've broken this presentation into three sections. Dark store, the Walgreens, and then how it affects us. So that's where I'll, I'll start with the dark store. So simply put, the loophole involves using vacant blighted properties in comparison to fully developed and functionally operable properties to determine value. So for instance, that newly constructed Walmart on Highway 100 at a cost of $20 million is being compared to that old vacant rundown Kmart in Waukesha. It's also being compared to a vacant former Lowe's on Brown Deer Road. So the dark store loophole is creating this burden and it's hurting taxpayers. And you know, at the very fundamental level, they're just ignoring fundamental appraisal practices. What's considered normal in say lending purposes and assessment purposes. It's being twisted to give, you know, what's called tax breaks to certain properties. And this ultimately is shifting the burden to homeowners. And I would also include renters in this because if a landlord is having taxes go up, that eventually is going to trickle down to the renters. So it's not just about property owners. It's about everyone in this community. So some of this is going to be a little, you know, egg headish. But really it comes down to what's called the principle of substitution in the appraisal and assessing worlds. And that's a purchaser is going to pay no more for a property than the cost of building an equivalent structure or purchasing an existing property with similar utility. And so I highlighted those words because that'll come back around later on in this presentation. Equivalent structure or similar utility. Basically in a nutshell, it means you're going to compare apples to apples. And the dark store circumvents this, it just ignores this aspect. So here's an example. We had the ShopCo in Nina, Wisconsin, sold for $9.6 million. It's a fully functional big box store. Compared to last year, Walmart came before our board review and they said that our Sam's Club was only worth 7.2 million. We had it assessed at 11 million. So if you think about the Milwaukee metro market, the number of people, the amount of traffic, the economic demographics of this, compare it to a place like Nina. And you start looking at the differences between that metro market, this metro market. You would expect that properties here are going to tend to be a little more valuable. So if you have a ShopCo Nina selling for 9.6, makes you wonder what the value of the Sam's Club here in West Dallas is worth. The tax rep that represented them, this was one of the comparables that he gave me. It was a vacant Lowe's in Elgin, Illinois, sold for 5.3 million. Then this year they came back again and they've requested an even lower value of 4.8 million. And they're currently, have filed a lawsuit against the city and they're going to use the dark store loophole. Last year, that tax rep, he told me that this was all set up. They're just fishing for lawsuits. So if we weren't willing to go to $50 a square foot, he was just going to try to get away from the circuit court and duke it out. So he did tell me that this is a nationwide push by Walmart. They, they have hired a single law firm that oversees all these tax reps and we're just caught up in it. So this has been delivered to our, our front door. In addition to that, and today, also 2015, Target came to the office and then they sought and secured a $900,000 reduction and they used the dark store loophole as well. I was not a part of that. That was something that happened, you know, prior. Menards also, here's another example of, they came in here and they provided a list of dark store comparables. I think one of them was even an old Burger King in Wausau. And they didn't even check the, you know, the sales that they were spending because they're just, they're just getting this stuff in. And it's not just these big box stores. What has happened is a template to appeal taxes using dark stores has been created. So now you're seeing the copycats. There's tax reps and attorneys out there that are saying, hey, could this work for my client? So we've seen other types of commercial properties come in and use this. And in this case, they're using vacant office buildings throughout the metro Milwaukee area for this. We've also had Wendy's, KFC, and Arby's come in and try the dark store loophole as well. So I've been saying the barbarians are at the gates, you know, they're, they're coming. So that, that was a quick overview of the dark store. The Walgreens case has a little different flavor to it, so I'll try to break this down. But essentially back in 2008, Walgreens sued the city of Madison and it made its way to the Supreme Court. And what the judge in the court found was that these properties are leased at above market rents and they must be based on hypothetical market rents rather than the terms of a Walgreen lease. And that they further concluded that the so-called above market rent constitutes a contract right rather than a real property right. So what I'm going to attempt to do here in the next few slides is try to unravel that and explain it. I don't know how much of it we need to understand here, but I think it's, it's going to get a little dry here. This is going to be a little boring, but I'll try to make it somewhat entertaining. So essentially this, this notion of above market rent is somewhat disingenuous because real estate markets set market rent. These Walgreens leases were established in a competitive market and therefore they represent a market rent. Now, what creates a lot of confusion, I think, with assessors and some, some other people is that this, these ownership structures take on different flavors and forms. Sometimes you have a corporate owned building and land and business all owned by a corporate down in Illinois, Walgreens corporate. But sometimes you have these situations where you have an investor that owns the land and then Walgreens or some other user, they own the building and the business and they rent the land and that's called a ground lease. And then sometimes, and that gets, sometimes you'll have an investor owns the land, another investor owns the building, and then the tenant rents from the building owner. So you have three people involved in these transactions. Burger King is a good example. Then you have a sale lease back where the owner sells the, the real estate, but then they turn around and lease it from that buyer. So the reason why I'm pointing this out is when you look at these transactions, there's going to be, there may be a lot of people involved, but essentially you're talking about a buyer and a seller, an investor and someone looking for a return on their investment. So these transactions, regardless of who's involved, landowners, developers, investors, they're operating in a competitive market. And what I've talked about a lot with people is start thinking about those prime corner lots at busy intersections. Those are prime lots because the right in, right out traffic delivers a lot of people to a business. And I'm looking at Michael, you know, because he's going to know for sure. So they, they pursue those, those corner lots because they can put a business there and make money. And it makes me remember Ray Kroc, you know, the guy that made McDonald's what it is. He would go around and say, I'm not in the business of selling burgers. I'm in the business of real estate. The burgers is just secondary. It just happens to be what's sold. It's the real estate that's my business. So companies like McDonald's and Walgreens and Starbucks and, you know, a whole host of other users, they're scouring the country, competing for those prime corner lots at busy intersections. And because of that, you have this competitive market that drives up prices. But then on the flip side of that, you have companies like Trader Joe's that recognize that and they say, no, we're going to go the other way. They pursue subprime locations so that they can cut down on their costs. Now in my former life, I worked for a development company and we were told by a municipality not far from here, you better deliver us Trader Joe's or we're not going to approve your project. So we went to Trader Joe's and we said, we'd like to put you at a big mall here in Milwaukee. And they said, no thanks. We like to go off to, you know, subprime areas because the rent's cheaper and we know our customers will come find us. I believe their first location was on Blue Mound near a Target. That's not, you know, Mayfair, that's, that's not Highway 100. That's someone off the beaten path compared to, you know, a national chain retailer. So back to this, this competitive market, you know, if some hypothetical Joe's chicken shack wants to enter the market and compete, they can do so. They just have to outbid the Walgreens and the McDonald's of the world. So to kind of wrap this part up, ultimately it comes down to the cost to acquire the land and the build, the building needs to be covered by the rent. So with that in mind, there's no overpaying of above market rent. This is the main crux of the Walgreens case is that they're coming into these markets and they're overpaying for these spots because Walgreens has this, this brand clout, this brand notoriety. And so investors are willing to pay more for that. But that completely ignores just the fundamental aspects of competition and supply and demand. I've been thinking about this a lot and there's really no genesis or maybe article someplace that says this started here. So you have to kind of figure out, well, where did this even come from? And if you go to the appraisal world, they have, you know, this diagram is, you know, in a lot of different books, but essentially you have contract rent. So this is what a tenant is paying a landlord. Now let's say for example, the market takes a decline and market rents are going down. So let's say 2008, 2009, the economy takes a downturn, so rents are going down. But you've signed a lease for say 20 bucks a square foot. Now market rent is around 15 bucks a square foot. What you've created there is this excess rent and what's called a negative lease hold for the tenant. It's a bad situation if you're a tenant because you could be paying less, but you're locked into this contract. And I think that's what happened with Walgreens and I think they use this, this normal function of lease contract rent that fluctuates. Because eventually things will turn around and you'll see a situation like this over here where the contract rent might be below where the market rent is. And if you're the tenant, you're sitting pretty because you're paying less the way you have to pay if you went someplace else. And this fluctuates over time. It fluctuates so much that oftentimes when commercial banks are wanting to extend loans for underwriting purposes, they'll ask the appraiser, identify if there's negative or positive lease hold because we want to know if the current contract rents are in line with the market. So oftentimes you'll see these comments in appraisal reports saying that the lease fee is similar to the fee simple. In other words, the contract rents are similar to market rent. And that makes the bank warm and fuzzy and comfortable and they'll extend their loans in dollars. All right, so a lot of this is just, you know, a lot of the economics behind this Walgreens case. And at this point, you could probably understand what I mean by, there's a lot of nuances. How, how do you translate this into something that's understandable? But you know, the main key is that these leases do in fact represent market rent and they're not an overpayment. It's not an above market rent. So changing gears here a little bit, I really liked this quote. 90% of the stock market volume is done by institutions and half of that is done by the world's 50 largest investment firms, deeply committed, vastly well-prepared, and the smartest sons of guns in the world, working their tails off all day long. This is from a book called Winning the Loser's Game by Charles Ellis. He wrote this in 1976. And essentially what he was trying to get at is that if you want to invest in the stock market, this is what you're competing against. Professionals and skyscrapers on Wall Street that do nothing but this kind of work. And so to paraphrase that, these corporations and their teams of accountants, attorneys, appraisers, and real estate professionals are deeply committed, vastly well-prepared, smart people, working their tails off all day long to make sure that these leases are set at market rent, values are fair, and ultimately the return on investment is advantageous. So to suggest that Walgreens is overpaying out of the kindness of their heart in the real estate market doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You have teams of people that are doing nothing but making sure that they're squeezing every dime that they can get out of all of these transactions on both sides of the table. The investors, the corporate entities, all of them. So the notion of overpaying the rent misses the mark. The actual leases represent market rent. And to understand the overwhelming amount of scrutiny that goes into these transactions to establish these true values is breathtaking. Commercial closings could take two days. They could take an entire day. You have underwriters going through stacks of paper on closing day, making sure that all of this adds up. So I don't buy it. The economics don't work and it doesn't pass the sniff test in my book. So really the, the real twist, the kicker here is that these, these true values, they'll use them for tax reporting when they need to depreciate assets and, and get write-offs. When they're asking a bank for money, these values are high. And when they're trading it between each other, these values are true and they're much higher. But when it comes to tax assessment purposes, all of a sudden these values get cut in half. It's funny how that works. So this, this little guy down here is, he's, he's wondering about that. So what does that mean in West Dallas? Well, we've got four Walgreens and two CVS pharmacies. So far CVS hasn't, hasn't done this here. They've done it in other parts of the country. It's just been the Walgreens. So they, they came forward after the 2008 case and they sought and received reduced assessments. And collectively, they're assessed at 7.8 million or an average of 1.95. So since then, the Walgreens at Highway 100 in Greenfield sold for 4.5 million. And we have them assessed at 1.78.
Jason, just a little 20 seconds. That 4.5 is factored off a cap rate which relates to a rent. So the rent rate was factored into the value of that property. Like you were pointing out before in terms of the high rent factor, that high rent factored into the value in that property.
Right. So these are what's called triple net lease properties. So triple or absolute net lease means that the rent that you pay, there, there's no vacancy factor because of the credit quality of the tenant. And there's no expenses, no expense, operating expenses deducted, but I don't know how you can understand that. This Walgreens, the newer one, 61st and Greenfield, they had it listed at 5.15 and it sold this past March for 4.9. We have them assessed at 2.5. But throughout the state, when you look at sales of Walgreens, they're around that $5 million mark. So if you do the simple math, you know, our four Walgreens times five, you come up with approximately 20 million. We have them at less than eight. So that's $12 million lost and the tax burden shifted. And it's not just here. This is a list of Walgreens and CVS store sales and you'll notice the range here from 4.1 up to 10 million with an average of 6.2. But the thing that, that I noticed is the sale dates. So as we're climbing our way out of the greatest recession, economic downturn since the Great Depression, this is what they were selling for. So six, seven years ago, these were the values. I don't have a more updated list, but... So, dark store loophole in the Walgreens cases are a practice in trickery and deception and essentially issues all the fundamental appraisal practices, their own lending practices, and ultimately it shifts the burden. So those are two overviews of, of the two issues, but I've been asked a lot, so how does that affect us? How does that actually make a difference here? So how does the shift happen? And I got this guy here saying, paying taxes, isn't that a point custom? So we've got this hypothetical village of Honey Creek. And we're going to say they've got four properties. They're each valued at the same, same amount for a total assessed value of a million dollars. So they each, they're all, they're all the same. So each one of them represents a quarter of the total value. Now let's say that Honey Creek has a levy of $25,000, which if you do the math, comes out to a mill rate of 25 per thousand or a tax rate of 2.5%. Now in a fair and equitable property tax system, everyone should share the same burden. So if you see the, the mill rate being applied to everyone evenly, they're all paying the same tax amount. But property number two, they, they caught on quick and they're out there trying to use the dark store loophole and they win. They win their appeal. And so you'll notice that their value gets cut in half and the total value drops, but you'll see how that shifts the share of the total value there. So in this case, the tax burden for the village is going to remain the same at 25,000. The levy did not go up. So you get to tell the constituents, the levy did not change. But the new tax rate, the new mill rate is 28.6 or a tax rate of 2.86. So if you apply that to those values, there's the shift. So everyone was paying 6250 before, but these three properties are now paying much more than that while this one property enjoys that reduction. So I've coined that the waterbed effect. So pushing down in one spot causes other areas to rise. The amount of water in the bed stays the same, but it just shifts. Just like with this example, the tax levy stayed the same, but the tax burden shifted. And she probably got that bed at the old Kmart, so... So this is a hypothetical scenario, but as you can see, you know, property two, they enjoy a 9.2% reduction, but at the expense of other property owners. Now the other owners, they get to open up their tax bill, see a 14% increase, but the levy didn't change and their value didn't change. I do not want that phone call. So this is where I'm going to sort of bring it home for you folks, the elected officials, because in order to maintain the tax rate or you don't have the ability to raise a levy, the shift, you know, isn't the issue. Now it's downward pressure on the levy and that's going to force you to make decisions about level of service and, and what can be done to get around this. So the dark store loophole in the Walgreens cases, they give you two choices. It's either going to shift the burden or it's going to be a cut to services. And, but in either case, it's the taxpayers that are bearing the burden. So in practice, this was just a very simple hypothetical scenario, but really it's more complicated because the tax rate can change, the levy can change, assessed values change from year to year. And then you got the other taxing jurisdictions. You've got the school district, you've got MMSD, MATC, the state, but then you also have possible state mandates, state restrictions. It's, it's, it's almost chaotic. And if you're trying to wrap your head around this to see, you know, what part of the water bed are you pushing down, where's it going to pop up? The what ifs scenarios are seemingly endless. You know, what if the levy stays the same, the values are going up? What if the values are going up, but the, you know, something over here in the school district happens? How is that all going to shake out on the tax bill in December? So what, that last comment down at the bottom, standing at the counter. So when I'm standing at the counter in the assessor's office and someone is trying to ask me, you know, why is my bill going up, but these things didn't change? What do I say? Do I say it's because the school levy went up? Is it because we let some dark stores win their appeals? It's, it, it could be chaotic, but I think the simple solution is looking at this dark store in this Walgreens case and knowing that they're not good. They gotta be stopped. Because there's going to be years where things are good. You know, values are going up, maybe the levy's staying constant. So maybe some of that shifting that's happening goes undetected. But in those years where things aren't ideal and you have a major shift that could be crushing. And are we going to be able to pinpoint it and give answers to the people who are voting? So that's, that's what a lot of this is, is trying to get at here. So to wrap things up, remember that old Kmart in Waukesha?
I know what it is.
An investor bought it, paid $2 million for it, hired the best traffic engineer around. Then he spent another $2 million on top of that to make it into a usable, functional building, just like all those other functional buildings trying to use the dark store loophole. And this is my favorite one, that old Lowe's on Brown Deer. Walmart bought it for $4 million and then they poured $6.4 million into it to make it a Walmart. So total cost to create an equivalent structure, 10.4 million. So remember, the premise of the principle of substitution states that a prudent purchaser will pay no more for the property than the cost of building an equivalent structure or purchasing an existing one with similar utility. So this is not fair and equitable. When you're comparing this functional store to these, these vacant buildings that eventually do get redeveloped, the money poured into them, this is more apples to apple. This is fair. So what can be done? Vote yes on August 14th. So there's a referendum that'll be put forth on the August 14th ballot. And, and what this is, is it's a message that can be sent to the legislatures, legislators, to let them know that something needs to be done about these dark store and Walgreens cases. So it's a vote of confidence to send a message to Madison. So we need to get the message out. Part of this PowerPoint was to provide an explanation of what this stuff even is and go from there. Promote it, push it, get people out to vote.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I assume we're going to have some things on our website and in social media stating the city's position on this?
Absolutely. Communications is working to get things on social media. They're working on putting together some illustrations to, to show in the most simple way how this shift affects us.
Something, something short. This is, people aren't going to read all of this. Something that's really brief that people can, you know, they were paying this, now they're paying this, you know, make, we have to make it graphic so people understand the big shift and, and I think people understand the, the consequences of the shift. I think most people understand that. I just don't think they realize that the shift is taking place right now. And that's the message we have to get across and how their state legislators ducked and ran the last session and voted on it. You know, they had an opportunity to pass the dark store bill and they shirked their responsibility and stuck it to the taxpayers. And, you know, I hope this is broadcast so that people see that they better start paying attention to who they're voting for, for a state legislature, because it has a big effect on what they pay for property taxes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I know when we supported a bill that was in front of us, um, and we, I think it passed ten-nothing, we sent it, you know, to Madison to state and the cities do. I think maybe we should do the same with this also, possibly have something written up that, you know, we vote on saying, you know, we support the passage as a council.
And maybe as a council, not until, no, before the fourteenth, pass a resolution. Uh, maybe not. Maybe we can have one introduced for the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I believe you already did.
No, I, I'm saying another resolution encouraging our residents to vote yes on this referendum, to make it more upfront and known to them so that they see it on the agenda. We have it at the meeting which is televised and, and, you know.
Everything and anything we do.
Keep it in front of their, their faces at every opportunity.
Alright, anyone else?
So I've got a question. Uh, we're saying the, the resolution, the idea of doing this at the next council meeting. Is there a mailer that's gonna be put out? Is there a city newsletter between now and then that there could be an insert put in there explaining this? Uh, is anything happening that would actually hit people at the mailbox and let them know?
Uh, so the approach we're taking is to hit social media hard. So the different avenues with that. Um, we're looking to have together that illustration on the city's website. We're gonna do FAQ, frequently asked questions. So we have a list of questions we think people would ask and then answers for them. We're gonna link this PowerPoint as well as some other resources that the League has provided. Um, in terms of the newsletter, um...
Or postcard or a...
I think you've gotta be careful on that because don't you have to register then as a, because you're campaigning for a, uh, a resolu- uh, a referendum?
I, I...
I get to do it in print or in social media though. I think you have to follow the same rules.
I'm not so sure about that because we're not spending any money.
Hey Steve?
Sorry.
Got a question?
I mean, do we, uh, we can't expend any funds to do this, correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm, hey Eric, uh, I, they were talking about some legislation now to allow, but I think that was directed to school boards. I don't think there's any legislation that says...
No campaign finance laws? Uh, when you're do, when you're, yes, there are, because you cannot campaign for or against a referendum without registering.
Municipalities and school districts can with referendums.
Okay, we can't.
Like, school districts will set up a committee.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking. Can we? Okay, because if we're looking at sending out a postcard or something, I just wanna make sure that we're within our legal rights to do that.
Yeah. Would that be something we'd be interested in?
Oh, I would say, I would say, yeah.
I, I think it would be a, a smart thing for what, forty cents or less at the, well, little postcards you could do for much cheaper than that.
For a few thousand dollars, absolutely.
That was one of the discussions we were having with Communications. They were going to be, um, that's why I was talking with Steve to see if they had talked to them, to him about getting the list of people that voted in primary elections so we could notify them. So we are working on getting something together. And it's simplifying in something in a, like a postcard that we could just send, you know, vote yes. So, there, there is, there's a communication campaign. And that's, one of the reasons we're having this meeting is so that some of the talking points that have been presented here can be put out in little clips on social media and available, so, going forward.
So, do you need authorization to do that or would that be on the seventh as well or?
I think you have to do that ahead of time, right?
You could certainly give us the go-ahead. I don't, it's not gonna be more than ten thousand dollars that we would need.
Oh, technically you don't have to ask, cause it's less than the threshold. Okay.
But you can say that.
Anyone against that on the council who's here?
We've got six members here. I'm not against it.
I'm not against it.
I'm not against it.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds all, all good. At least the majority of us, the six of us who are here, so, that would be good. And are we working with them?
I didn't see Marty back there.
You're good with that too, Marty? Postcards?
I would say the story that Marty spent, could we get an opinion from the city attorney on it?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Well, even by email, just send them. We work with the League of Municipalities. They've put a lot of information together too. Are we getting it? Okay. Alright. Anyone else in the audience have any questions? Yeah, John?
So, city newsletter hits mailboxes August thirteenth, so.
It'd be before.
It takes about weeks to fill out, so.
Well, could you do the postcard, Ann? Put it in?
Could we send the newsletter out early? Just remember you have in-person absentee voting going on before.
Yes, you wanna get it out as soon as possible, but, but I don't think it's a bad thing to, uh, include it in the newsletter. Just as a, you know, if they get it on time before they vote, great.
Absolutely.
When can we have it in social media?
We're, we're having it more, we're having it in time for the, um, elect, the in-person absentee ballots, but we don't wanna do it too, there's a plan of when we are gonna have it out there. We'll let those people that share things know so they can share it on your social media. So you, you don't wanna hit people too often and too early, so.
There is a legislative study group on this subject and I, I know a few people, I, I don't know when they're gonna have hearings, but in Madison they do plan on having hearings on, um, conceptual bills. There's two alternatives out there right now, I understand. My professional organization's been feeding me, just like the League of Cities, uh, in terms of economic development side of it. And we are fairly dark, so some positions are different on the Walgreens one, so.
But, but they're not a session until...
Yes, but they haven't working, they set up working study groups on these subjects and, and we'll see what comes out of that. So, they're paying, they're, they didn't take up the bill, but they're working on something in Madison.
So the committee includes Walgreens, it includes the attorney who represents Walgreens, includes a representative for WMC, and then they have an assessor from Pleasant Prairie as the assessment representative. So how that balances and how that works out and what, what their product is, uh, is yet to be seen. And also, um, just to add to that, the way that committee was designed was to look at assessment issues. So their scope of work is not just these issues. They could be looking at other things that could come down the pike, so.
Alright, anyone else? I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.